Grohl, Ms. Han. Good morning. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Ray Smith, Birigoza, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, eleven members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. We are in session. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for Tuesday, March 30th. And we are going to begin the day with a not-quite-ready with a presentation. All right, then let us start going through the agenda, please.
First order of business is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves, Mr. Smith seconds. The minutes are before us and approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those are approved. We also actually begin the day with a salute to the flag. So, Mr. Ludlow caught that and reminded me. So, would everyone please stand for the salute to the flag and we'll call on Mr. Ludlow to lead us in the pledge.
Actually, I didn't catch that. The council chair caught that. Thank you, Cindy. Please face the flag, place your hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why don't we, I see a large delegation gathering, which I think is here for our first presentation. Why don't we allow them to come in and we will then begin with the recognition of Mr. Padilla, who I think is going to be joined by Councilmember Weiss. Mr. Padilla?
Mr. Weiss, Yuri Stern is going to speak. That's what I've been told. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Colleagues, Jack and I are back at it. We're here with a very special presentation this morning. As you've heard us share with you before, we had a wonderful, wonderful, really chant of a lifetime opportunity this last November to visit Israel for both of us our first time. And we've come back sharing many stories and the many points of that visit that were very, very inspirational. Among them was a visit to their Knesset, really the house of their governing bodies, their Congress, if you will. And we have today members of the Israeli Knesset visiting Los Angeles as part of a United States visit, and we wanted to welcome them to Los Angeles City Council chambers. If they would stand, let me introduce them each by name, and please give them a round of applause. Please welcome members of the Israeli Knesset, Ruchama Avacham, member of the Knesset, Ronnie Barhon, member of the Knesset, Amnon Cohen, member of the Knesset, Ilan Leibovich, member of the Knesset, Etty Livni, member of the Knesset, Orit Noked, and a member of the Knesset who was kind enough to meet with us when we were in Israel last November, member Yuri Stern. Colleagues, all I can say in an effort to keep this brief and keep them on schedule is, you think we have a diverse city. You think we have a diverse group of policymakers sitting around a horseshoe. Truly, to see the Knesset in action is to see democracy at its finest. Couldn't think of a much more diverse group of people from different backgrounds, different political philosophies and values, but one thing that holds them together, one thing they have in common is their commitment to the state of Israel and to do what's best for the people of Israel. We stand in solidarity with them and should really look to them as an inspiration for us getting along here. We may have our differences, but at the end of the day, we're all Angelinos, first and foremost at heart, and do what's best for the people of our great city. With that, let me turn it over to Councilmember Jack Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla, and welcome to all of you. It's really wonderful to have you here in Los Angeles as part of what I understand is a real whirlwind of a trip to New York, Washington, San Diego, Los Angeles, back to New York, in a week. And it means a lot to the Jewish community in Los Angeles, to the Jewish community in the cities that you're visiting. And it means a lot to everybody to have a chance to meet you and speak with you, because this is such a critical time in the period of the relationship between our country and your country. And I want to say it here very clearly and very loudly, please take the message back to Jerusalem, that Los Angeles stands in solidarity with Israel. It is extraordinarily important. And members, I want to tell all of you, it is not a given, it is not a given in America, it's not a given in America's political system, that Americans will do the right thing and stand by Israel. Just yesterday, the Los Angeles Times published a grotesquely one-sided and biased photo exposé on the security fence, which is a very difficult issue. There are a lot of complexities. There are people here who probably have different views on that issue, but no one could look at what was published in our city's own newspaper yesterday and conclude that it was fair, because it wasn't. For the last several years, the people of Israel have faced an extraordinary onslaught of terror attacks, extraordinary. On September 11th, 2001, our country lost 3,000 citizens, 3,000 individuals. Well, in the equivalent period in Israel, they have lost per capita the equivalent of 50,000 people to terror attacks. Think about that difference. 3,000 American lives lost on September 11th, the equivalent of 50,000 lives lost in the past three years in Israel. What they face on a daily basis is extraordinary, and it is incumbent upon all of us as Americans and Angelinos to stand in solidarity with their great country. Welcome to Los Angeles. It's a privilege to have you. Thank you.
Colleagues, as you know, we had a private reception before this council meeting began in our executive conference room. We've had a chance to present them with welcome certificates to our city and small gifts of friendship and appreciation. Want to invite to speak on behalf of the group, Knesset member Yuri Stern, who was with us in November, and also the Chairman of the House Committee, the equivalent of the Chairman of the Rules Committee, so we can overlook that, Ronnie Barhon. Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable City Council members, people of Los Angeles. We are very honored to be here with you. We are coming all the way long from Jerusalem, from the Knesset, the shrine of democracy in Israel. To be with you here, you have a marvelous city, totally outstanding, especially when you're coming from the east coast, you learn to appreciate what Los Angeles and the west coast means. Thank you very much for your hospitality. And I want to finish with the ancient Hebrew word, shalom, which has a double meaning. Shalom means peace, shalom means hello. So, shalom to all of you. Thank you very much.
In the name of our whole group, I wish really to thank you as a City Council, to thank the Jewish community of Los Angeles that together with the Council of Jewish, United Jewish Communities of the United States and the Jewish Agency for Israel brought this, our mission to your place. And, you know, I must tell you, our country is very small. I mean, our whole country is not much bigger than your one city, but everything that happens in our land has enormous, enormous significance for everybody, for the whole world. And our small nation shares with Americans the basic values of the modern civilization. We are the same, in the same position as you in trying to combine the modernity and deep faith and devotion to the tradition. And we are the only democracy, the island of democracy, of women's rights, of minority rights, of human rights in our area. Our group of seven members of the Knesset represents five different political parties. Two of us were born outside of Israel in the former Soviet Union. If you ask people where their parents did come, and you'll see Morocco, Yemen, Poland, Turkey, Russia, Germany, seven people, and that is our country with all our minority cultures and immigration, and a great diversity that maybe is only parallel to what you have in Los Angeles. So, really, thank you very much. We will meet again, I believe, with some of you in the forthcoming years, and there is, I've been told, a new mission coming from your state and from your legislative bodies to Israel this fall. And I hope we will be able to sit and talk to you, and those who will come for the first time will be back, different people, as in some sense we would be after coming back from Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Labange would like to greet you.
With these distinguished guests in this great chamber, could we have a group shot right here real quick? I think they would love to have that and see this beautiful chambers. This is Hollywood. Thank you.
We'll let our Hollywood director help guide us to the center there for a photo.
Thank you. Thank you very much to our special guests for their presence this morning. Members of the Council, if I can call this meeting back to order and proceed with a healthy agenda that we have today. Madam Clerk, the council is officially in session. Next order of business, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, we do have a couple of speaker cards under general public comment today. The council calls forward Ms. Victoria Torres, to be followed by Monica Harmon and Irene Alanis. Are you with us still? Your name, please, ma'am?
Victoria Torres.
Victoria Torres. Good morning, President and City Council members. The issue I bring before you today is no new issue. It has been brought before the City Council at different times in the past two years, and that issue is public safety. This is the issue of the City Council's needs to address and act upon. City Council, public safety should be the number-one issue as City Council members. People in your council districts have been addressing this issue for the past two years, and the people are not being heard. What will it take before public safety becomes that number-one issue on your agendas? I ask City Council members today to consider how you direct taxpayer dollars that are being used for street closures, special events, and city absorptions, rather to be used instead for public safety, to redistrict these funds to ensure the safety of the city and the people who live here. Today is March 30th, 2004, and we're only three months into the new year. There have been 19 homicides just in the community east of City Hall, and that's not to mention south of the city, where there have been numerous homicides to date. Is this not telling you something, Council members? City Council members, this should be on your agenda. Ease up on unnecessary spending. Address the issues: public safety, safer streets, more police officers. Give the people of the city what they deserve and address these quality-of-life issues that are affecting the city. City Council, you can stop the violence by using taxpayers' dollars where it is needed most.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Last year, ALI PD Communications Dispatch answered 3.3 million calls. We need public safety to be at the top priority of this city. Councilman Parks stated in a news article last week that community activism is not enough to collect petitions or write a letter. It's more about talking to your neighbors and friends about issues that affect them, and to resolve that, it's about your physical presence. Well, here we are today. We've been speaking on public safety issues for the last two and a half years. In this day and age of terrorism, you as our city leaders and politicians need to put public safety at the tops of your agenda. You look around the city, there's housing development going all over the city, and yet we're not expanding our police department, and that just doesn't make common sense. The Housing Authority no longer provides security, so who do you think needs to pick up the slack? ALI PD lags behind four other big cities with having fewer police officers per capita. Their politicians think enough of their police department to put them at the forefront. This mentality needs to come to Los Angeles. The Daily News and the LA Times opinion pieces both stated that public safety should be a top priority in this city. Neighborhood councils across the board had to fill out a survey which of the five issues were more important to their communities, and they all said public safety. We keep hearing there's no money, and yet you keep spending it on programs, raises, office staff, that we think should be better used with our tax dollars going to police officers. We know more police officers isn't the answer, but it is part of the solution. Chief Bratton has done a remarkable job working more with less. He can't do it alone, and it's about time us as residents, taxpayers, and you as our City Council leaders step up to the plate. We are on board with Sheriff Baca's Public Safety Initiative collecting signatures, and I know many of you support that initiative. I want to, in closing, I want to make a quote, state a quote from a man that I have admired all my life. He says, "There are risks and costs to a program of action, but they are far less than the long-range risk and cost of comfortable inaction." That's John F. Kaye. Thank you, and God bless you, Officer Lizuraga, for giving your life to protect and serve us. Thank you.
Ms. Alanis.
Good morning. Good morning, City Council. My name is Irene Alanis. I'm a member of York Valley Association. It's a northeast area. Since our forefathers, our country was built on hope and dreams. We need to continue to enhance public safety in our communities. Each and every one of you need to accomplish those hope and dreams. We need more dollars for police officers, and let us not forget our firefighters. Our police are asking to respond to many, many things that other companies or other companies and agencies are getting money for. This is not fair for some of the items that our police officers are answering calls for. The protection for our babies through seniors must be number-one for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and this concludes general public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next items, Mr. President, items noticed for public hearings. Items 1 through 3 are ordinances confirming street lighting assessments.
Okay. Members, items 1 through 3 now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Any requests for specials on items 1, 2, or 3? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items 4 through 25. There are two reports on item number 25. A motion is required on that one.
Okay. Members, items 4 through 25 now before us. Public hearings have been held in committee on these items. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings, and seeing no such motion, do we have any requests for specials? Items 4 through 25. We do need a motion on item 25. Mr. Garcetti.
I would move the HCD motion. I know Rules and Elections has something in support, but since the legislation has been withdrawn, I think it's appropriate to just note and file, which is what we did in HCD. So I've moved that report.
Okay. Any requests for specials? Seeing none, let's open the roll. Items 4 through 25, with the Housing Committee report being moved in item 25, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, 26 through 53. 10 votes are required for consideration, and a community impact statement has been submitted on item number 48.
Okay. Without objection, items 26 through 53 are before the City Council today. I do have cards on item 48. We'll call that special, and Mr. Smith, author of the motion, would get to speak to that item first. On the balance of the items, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. Public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Any requests for specials, items 26 through 53? Any requests for specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those matters are approved. Next item, please.
Next items, 54 through 59 are closed sessions. Do you wish to hold those matters on the desk?
Let's hold all closed-session matters on the desk.
On the supplemental agenda, item number 60 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Members, item 60 now before us. Public hearing has been held on this item. Do we have any requests to call this item special? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item number 60. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next items, 61 and 62 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed on items 61 and 62. Mr. Cardenas.
Item 62 special?
Item 62 called special by Mr. Cardenas. Any member wishing to call item 61 special? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 61, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item 61 is approved. Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item number 48 was called special for cards from the public, and a community impact statement has been submitted and distributed to the council members. Do you wish to have that read into the record?
Let's hear the community impact statement. We will then proceed to speaker cards, and then we'll come back to council discussion.
The community impact statement was submitted by the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council, and it is as follows. The Silver Lake Neighborhood Council Governing Board voted at its meeting of March 3rd to oppose the DWP water rate increase as presented. The SLNC urges the City Council to stand with the more than 30 neighborhood councils opposed to the rate hike and insists that the DWP engage our stakeholders in planning and implementing any increase. The Department must facilitate a clear understanding of the need for an increase. When neighborhood council leaders can properly address our stakeholders' concerns, we can work in harmony with the DWP to seek consensus on a system for increasing revenue to the Department.
Thank you very much. We now turn to speaker cards. Jim Algar will be the first speaker, followed by Brady Westwater and Kevin Singer. Please come forward at this time.
Good morning. I rise this morning in support of Greg Smith's motion before this council. As a council member for District 12, Greg Smith represents the northern end of the San Fernando Valley. The valley clearly is sensitive to water rates, given a climate which often sends temperatures into the hundreds during summer months. But that is not the motivation behind this proposal. When a city-owned utility arbitrarily raises its rates, it affects everyone on both sides of the hill. In the ongoing struggle over the current proposed rate increase, I have had the honor of speaking before many neighborhood councils citywide. I have met people from all walks of life, people like Katie Daniels, a resident of Crenshaw. Mrs. Daniels is in her 80s, and like many Angelinos, lives on a fixed income. She is barely making it as it is. In fact, she is watching this council meeting today on Channel 35 at a neighbor's house because she can't afford cable. Mrs. Daniels approached me at a neighborhood council meeting with a simple request. You see, the sanitation department had broken her trash can, and up to now, she's had little success in getting it replaced. She wanted to know if I could help. Here I was, a member of an as-of-yet uncertified neighborhood council miles away, and she sought my help. It would have been easy to redirect her to another council, but I made the calls and had her trash can replaced a few days later. I left Crenshaw that night with the deeper conviction than I already had about what neighborhood councils mean. It is about helping a community and not necessarily just the one in which you live. It is about listening to the people, something government would do good to try and do more often. Most importantly, it is about people acting as the last and final check on its government. The Department of Water and Power has consistently circumvented that check and is attempting to do so now with fear, half-truths, and flat-out lies. The DWP has proven time and time again that they cannot be taken at their word, and as the saying goes, if you cannot trust a messenger, you sure as heck can't trust the message. What Councilman Smith has proposed places that check back into the equation. He gets it, and I thank you, sir. And in the process, he helps make neighborhood councils relevant, not just with words, but with actions. I cannot applaud him enough for standing up for the citizens of Los Angeles against the politics of fear. I strongly encourage this body to approve this motion, for without it, who is to protect the Katie Daniels of the world? I submit that that is our job, those of us who have risen as community leaders and those of you who people like Katie Daniels help elect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Brady Westwater. I'm vice president of Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council, but I'm speaking here today as a private citizen. First of all, I'd like to thank the many members of the City Council who have taken time to meet with the various representatives of neighborhood councils to discuss this issue on a one-on-one basis. I would also like to thank the Department of Water and the Power, who realize that they have to change their way they have been treating the community, that they have to meet the neighborhood councils, and we've had excellent meetings with them, and we've now started a dialogue. In fact, we received from them two Saturdays ago a letter of intent for an MOU to be set up that represents the neighborhood councils, will sit down with the DWP for the future and discuss not just this rate hike, but plans for the next 5, 10, 20, 30 years. One of the biggest problems the city has faced, whenever long-term issues, whenever infrastructure issues come up, whenever some of the more arcane matters come up, the only people you have sitting in front of you are lobbyists and the special interests who tend to benefit in the short term from these projects. You have never had a consistent voice from the public representing what are the long-term values and interests of your constituents. Well, thanks to your standing in neighborhood councils, you now have an informed group of people who are going to sit down with you and give you advice and look for advice from you on how we could better serve this city. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kevin Singer. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, and we just, we wanted to come down here today and support the neighborhood councils, support Councilman Smith and Councilwoman Grul in their push for this motion today. Believe me, in talking with the neighborhood councils and the apartment building owners of Los Angeles, we understand infrastructure, and there's no doubt that we need to continue to maintain the infrastructure of the city of Los Angeles. But the way that we have followed this DWP water fee increase, it's just not coming across very honest to the people of the city of Los Angeles. One of the big issues that we heard time and time again was that our bond rating was going to be hurt, that if we didn't pass this increase. We haven't seen that that case has been able to be proved by the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. There's been a lot of questions that have been raised, and these are questions that need to be answered through an audit, and I think as a City Council, you have a great opportunity to do some audits to really make the people of Los Angeles, the business community, the private community feel good about this increase and that you're doing the best thing for the city of Los Angeles. Also, we want to thank Councilman Parks and Councilman Garcetti for instructing the Los Angeles Housing Department to research the issue of this 18% DWP rate increase that's proposed on rent-controlled apartment buildings that only get a 3% rent increase. These are our private, affordable housing providers who provide housing for the people that live in the city of Los Angeles, and we cannot ignore them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item. Now turning to council discussion. Mr. Smith, followed by Ms. Grul and Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm very pleased to hear from the neighborhood council people that are here today. As we've talked over the past number of weeks around this chamber about this impending rate increase, one thing became very clear to me, that all of us had a very strong concern, that there was no quantifiable information out there, that we really put our finger on and say 18% is the right number, that we weren't sure what the numbers were. And in particular, when issues of the bond rate increase and the bonding of the city's Department of Water and Power were discussed, nobody, nobody could give Mr. Cardenas and his committee or anybody in this council a real hard number that said, "This is what we need to make sure our bond is protected." All they were was a very nebulous statement that a rate increase is needed to protect the bond, but nobody knew how much. And so I questioned the numbers, and I looked down the numbers, and I said to myself, "Where are the infrastructure numbers that we can really put a dollar figure on and say, 'This is what's needed for infrastructure. Can it be held off for a later time? Is it necessary now?'" They talked about security concerns in their 18%, and in that 18%, I found things that have been discussed around here for 10 years. They're not 9/11-related security issues. They've been talking about covering reservoirs in Hollywood and the valley for over a decade now. I think they were brought forward to us in this as a matter of convenience for the Department of Water and Power to say, "We have to cover them to protect our reservoirs," but nobody's proven to us yet that that is truly a security need. We looked at, and I've said in this council chamber a number of times, that the pay increases that have been going on in Water and Power are driving a lot of these concerns, and they've sat here and said to you last year, when they came in with the 5% rate, pay raises, that we don't need additional money to do this. We have it. And here we are a year later saying, "We're out of money." I think there's a very strong concern in the public, as well as in this council, that we need a process that is quantifiable, that tells us as members of the council what we're dealing with in rate increases, whether it's this 18% or next year, the year after, whatever. Any Water and Power rate increase needs to be quantifiable and explained to us in numbers that we understand, and I don't think that process has taken place. More importantly, Water and Power, which is a very powerful agency in this city, has existed in its own world for a very long time. There's a new world in Los Angeles that includes neighborhood councils, that includes neighborhood participation. We've set up a new system here, and all of us are beginning to work with that system. And while that system is evolving and has its problems yet to get over, it is a process of inclusion rather than exclusion. Department of Water and Power has never realized fully that this new system exists in Los Angeles, and they have to be a part of that, that any rate increase sincerely affects the people of Los Angeles. They need to be out there explaining all those issues. And so I brought forward this motion to you today that would establish for all rate increases, this one and future ones, a system by which we can really look at rate increases. And secondly, that we instruct Department of Water and Power that in any future rate increases, whether the Water Powers side, whichever side, that they come forward to the neighborhood councils before the process comes over to City Hall, and include the citizens of Los Angeles in a seamless and open way, rather than in the way they've done it for over 100 years, and that is, they prepare a package, they send it to us, and we rubber stamp it because we just don't know any better. It's time to change the culture at Water and Power. It's time to make the citizens of Los Angeles included in that culture, and I think this is the motion that will do that, and I ask for your support today. Thank you.
Ms. Grule.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my colleague Greg Smith, who's taken a strong leadership role on this issue particularly, and I was willing and interested in seconding this because I think we all had the same concerns. Colleagues, I don't know about you, but beginning in December, near the end of December, we started getting panicked calls from the Department of Water and Power. We have to raise the rates in January because the bond council's meeting and the rates are going to increase, and if we don't do it, we're gonna, you know, the sky will fall. Well, we are now almost to April 1st, April Fool's Day. I almost feel like it's kind of an April Fool's, because I've been told every week that the bond council is going to come up and say that our bond rating has gone down because we have refused to increase. All of us in this council have taken difficult stands where we've had to have rate increases. Last year, we increased the sanitation charge. But you know, we increased it based on the fact we had dollars and cents and figures in front of us that said the cost of collecting trash was X amount, and even the amount that we're charging isn't going to cover what the cost is. But we knew the answers to our questions. And I've had the opportunity to meet with our neighborhood council representatives here, and many in my district, who have talked about the, their interest in holding government accountable. They didn't have a knee-jerk reaction, no. It was, explain this to me, just like we all have here. Explain to me how this is going to work, why we have to go up 18%. Is 18%, as you mentioned, Greg, the number? What does it mean? We have been doing more with less. We've asked all of our departments this year to come forward more with less, and they've demonstrated, some departments have shown us where they have cut costs. I haven't seen that from the Department of Water and Power and how they have cut their costs. We want to be able to demonstrate to the people who, who vote in the city, who pay the taxes, that in fact, an 18% increase is warranted. Mr. Smith's motion that I seconded was very clear, that we wanted an independent financial analysis to tell us that. And it's unfortunate, colleagues, that we're having to, have to call, you know, have these independent reviews, and that we have to have audits. But there's a distrust by our citizenry and our communities of government, and a distrust of many of us here in this council chambers, because they don't see that we actually have gone through the numbers, whether it be for this increase or other increases, or other types of things we're going to do in the city of Los Angeles. And just in a few weeks, the mayor will release this budget, and we will have several weeks and months of discussion on that budget. And we're going to ask some of those tough questions. And Ms. Hahn and many of us in this room asked tough questions last Friday about our sidewalk repair. So this motion says we want to be able to demonstrate and look our constituents in the eye and say, this is what it costs. We've done everything we can to tighten our belt, and we believe in this. Today, I can't do that. And so this motion gives us tools today and in the future to say there's been an independent analysis in the way in which we are going to provide rate increases. And I think that as someone who represents the valley where it is, and it was very hot yesterday in the San Fernando Valley, everyone had their air conditioners on, everyone had, you know, using that water, we feel it more than anybody else in that increase. So I am particularly concerned about that. I see that my time is over. Thank you. You're giving me a little bit of leeway there, Ms. Akowski. But the time to do this kind of motion, to accept it, and colleagues, I encourage you to adopt it today, which gives confidence back to the people of Los Angeles that we're serious about any action we take, and we want to know the facts first. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and, and thank you, Mr. Smith, too, for your leadership on this issue, for, for diving in. And I want to thank the neighborhood councils. I know we all have something from one of my neighborhood councils, and Rusty Millar is here, but Jim and other folks, I've been following on the listserv for many, many weeks now, all your activities, kind of just as an interested observer, and it's been remarkable to see the city come together. Oftentimes, people say that we're a city of many neighborhoods, but people don't emphasize that we are one single city. And Jim, I just wanted to, to thank you for your speech, because I think it underlined that we are one city here in Los Angeles. I think we know that here, because we have 15 people who represent 15 different areas, who every day come together and share that knowledge and that experience, the voices from different communities. But it's something that's pretty rare outside of City Hall. I mean, it's ironic, because City Hall gets beat up a lot for being parochial, when in fact, it's one place where the city actually comes together. But the neighborhood councils are showing that that can happen on a grassroots level, too. And here, specifically with the water issue, you've shown, too, that the, the city, just like us, simply wants transparency. We want this to be as a transparent process as the very water that we're talking about. And if, and if it can flow as freely and as openly as the water that we bring from all over the state and out of state, I think we'll take a giant step into how this process works for people. Having the basic information in front of us is an opportunity, not just for us, but an opportunity for the department, too. You know, offline, when you talk to people in the department, there are all sorts of issues which we, I think, can connect with this. Reforms, sometimes the differences between different units in the department, in which people, like a corporation, often bring in outside consultants to do an assessment, so that they can use those numbers to show there's a compelling case to do things on security. There's a compelling case to do things in reforming bureaucracy. There's a compelling case to do things in terms of making sure we don't just do an increase for one year and have to come back each year. I've, I've been very respectful, that a lot of folks are saying, if we're going to do this increase, neighborhood council folks have been saying, tell us what it's going to cost over six or seven years, so that we can support that in good conscience. It's not saying we don't want an increase at all. We want to know that we're doing this in the, in the most comprehensive way. And whatever we do for this coming year, and it looks like people are gravitating, and I think it's a wise choice towards doing the increase for one year as we find out these statistics, when we find those statistics, let's sit down and really get to the bottom of them, so that we can do something that's going to be right for the next 10 years. Because we don't have to spend all of our time coming back time and time again, you as volunteers, we as, as paid public servants, but nevertheless, being distracted by something that we can, I think, burrow down into one, one time, find out that information, do the right thing, and have a mechanism that will keep up with the times. I also want to thank the apartment owners, and we've been working with tenants as well, because it is something that affects everybody's lives, and it's one of the few utilities we haven't been able to have shared costs with apartment owners, and I think that will be an important part of our deliberations as well. I know with Mr. Parks, we've, are going to be looking at that in the Housing Committee. But colleagues, you know, in conclusion, I just wanted to thank Mr. Smith. I know there are six cosponsors here, so I won't mention everybody else by name, but I think we have an entire council full of cosponsors today, who are really standing up, because you guys took the lead out there. We have followed the neighborhood councils, and for those who are cynical about the neighborhood councils, that they were only going to be a voice against things, I think today you're proving that you're a voice asking for information so you can be for something. Just don't ask us to be for something before we have that information. So thank you, and you have my full support.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Ravier Regosa.
I, too, would like to thank and acknowledge Greg Smith for his leadership on this issue. And I want to thank the neighborhood councils, because this is an example of what we expect from the neighborhood councils. They should, when they believe that something's wrong in the city of Los Angeles, that we need to change something, they should organize, and they have. And they've spoken clearly, and I want to speak clearly today, not only in support of this measure, but I am opposed to an 18% increase. And I'll just be honest with you, why? It seems to me that when you want to propose an increase of this magnitude, what you have to do is get a public support. You have to engage people. You have to do what we're asking them to do here, but we shouldn't have had to ask them to do that in the first place. We should have been working with those neighborhood councils, explaining why we need this money. Greg Smith was whispering in my ear a few minutes ago that, in fact, in addition to this 18% increase, there's a proposal on the table for a 5% increase from DWP over a five-year period. That's 25% plus 18. You do the math, 43% increase. And for me, that doesn't make sense. And so I support this measure. I think we need to have, put some sunshine on the DWP. We need to look at what we're doing to create efficiencies, to save money in every corner that we can. If we need to increase, we should put one across, but it should be something that has public support. It should be something that's been aired out, and it should be something that's over time, and not just one 18% increase. Secondly, I'm very concerned about the idea that this, the ration, the current rationale, which is that this is to protect the national security and to fight against terror. Members, that is our most important challenge in this country today. We can't belittle it. We can't denigrate it. We can't make it up either. When Greg Smith says that some of these proposals have been proposals on the table long before September 11th, we do a disservice to our constituents. We do a disservice to the idea that this matter of national security and the fight against terror is an important issue. And so it seems to me we need to get to the bottom of that, and if, in fact, we need to, to do something with respect, to take those precautions, we need to go to the federal government, as Jack Weiss has been doing time and again, go to the federal government and say, hold it. You have a responsibility to cover those costs. You know, we can't continue a situation where the first responders, cities and counties, continue to bear the cost of national security and the fight against terror. It's up to the federal government and this administration to do that. And so I urge your aye vote, and again, I thank you, Mr. Smith, for your leadership on this issue.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I want to thank the neighborhood councils for being here again, and unfortunately, you have to be here again, because we did hear this in the CENR Committee twice already. This motion is good policy. Thank you, Greg. This motion is good policy, because prior to this, it went to my committee, the Department of Water and Power testified before my committee twice already. The first time they testified, they were a little bit more clear. The second time they testified, they started to get a little murky. They fumbled their way through. They literally mumbled at some of the answers to the questions. It was, it was unfortunate that these intelligent individuals, very, very versed on the issues, for some reason, couldn't get the words out the way they were as the meeting progressed. That's unfortunate. And unfortunately, that means that we have not vetted out this process properly and enough. And it's unfortunate that we need simple language like this, but true. It says, "I therefore move that any request for a rate increase by the Department of Water and Power be subject to an independent financial review and analysis to determine if an increase is justified, and if so, at what amount." An increase is due. Come on. Since 1992, the Department of Water and Power has been doing a darn good job of delivering clean and reliable water, which is their primary responsibility. They do that with electricity as well. But the problem is this, when they came to the council, there's a council process where we have public hearings and public meetings, that was the opportunity for them to communicate to all of Los Angeles, and to the neighborhood councils, and to the council, about what that rate increase should be. Unfortunately, right now, I cannot say, other than them picking out a number out of the air, that 18% is correct. 18% is incorrect, and what is incorrect is the lack of communication, the lack of education to Angelenos, to the neighborhood councils, and to the council about what it should be. It's as simple as that. Just because it, they haven't had a rate increase since 1992, means that we give them whatever they want. No, they're supposed to quantify it. They're supposed to qualify it. They have many intelligent people there who know a lot about what they're doing, and they should have come forward in public view and said, this is what we're doing, this is what we need to do, and this is how much it's going to cost. They didn't do that. Also, one of the things that I want to make clear as well, is that this motion is, in fact, the right motion, Councilman Smith. Unfortunately, we're going to have to formalize with your motion how and when and if we do rate increases in the future, whether it be power or water. Because what we did is we went ahead and let them know that we have a committee process, and you will comply with that committee process, and what they did is they were not forthright with the information. They did not, they did not prove to us beyond any means that there is an 18% increase warranted today. Maybe through all this vetting, maybe through us going to the council, maybe going through the entire process again, it might be that 18% isn't enough, maybe 18% is too much, but at least we'll know the truth. All we want is the truth. All we want is the facts. And if you think that Angelenos can't handle the truth, you're wrong. They can handle the truth. What they can't handle is people not telling the truth. That's what Angelenos can't handle. That's what we, as a council, should not put up with. So thank you very much, Greg Smith, for putting this motion forward, and I want to make a motion that this motion, this item, go through the CENR Committee next, so that we can actually formalize this and move it into the process, so that this or any future rate increases will have this scrutiny and this formalized scrutiny from here forward. Thank you very much, Councilman.
Thank you. Councilmember Weiss.
Second, Mr. Cardenas's motion, and I want to also say to my friend, Mr. Smith, well done. Well done, and you've struck a chord in the city, and you've struck a chord in, in this body. I hope you've struck a chord in city government, but you know what? I'm not so sure. I don't know, because the reality is, I just wanted to respond to Ms. Grule a second ago. You said that what we're doing today is symbolic of the fact that, that the people of this city don't trust the DWP. I think it's worse than that. I think what we're doing today is saying very clearly, we don't trust the DWP's numbers, or else we'd be voting for this darn increase today. It's a sad day, but it's true. We don't trust the DWP's numbers, and that's why we need an outside accountant like Pricewaterhouse or one of the other two accounting firms left to do the work for us. And unless and until that independent work is done, we are not going to be satisfied, nor should we. I mean, you know, you look at what the administration has done here, and I understand Mr. Cardenas's point, I understand everybody else's points, that maybe, you know, a rate increase one day is necessary, but, you know, it's like, it's like what's going on at the gas pump, right? You just show up every day, and the prices just keep going up and up and up. And it's as if that's what was going to happen to LA's water rates. People were going to show up at their mailbox every month, and the rates were just going to go up and up and up, for no reason, and with no accountability, and with no honest numbers. So thank you, Mr. Smith. On the subject of terrorism, which has been bandied about as an excuse for this rate increase, I, I really take a backseat to nobody in this city in wanting to protect this city from terrorism, but I just was jotting down, one of the things that I, that keep me up at night, more than the water supply, suicide bombings, coordinated attacks like we saw in Madrid, car bombings, radiological attacks, ammonium nitrate attacks like we saw one was thwarted in London this morning. There are a lot of more serious and severe threats that any anti-terrorism expert will tell you a city ought to worry about above and beyond the issue of the water supply. The water supply issue is important, but have they sold me on the need for anti-terrorism, for, for the, for the level of, of anti-terrorism expenses they want to make on the water side over their DWP? No. In fact, they didn't even try to sell me on it, and I hope now that if they think there's a good case to make, they'll come to me. Because as of right now, Mr. Smith, I haven't heard it at all. I have not heard it at all, and I'm very proud to support your motion.
Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Although I agree that we need to understand how DWP is manipulating its numbers, changing them, drafting them, however you want to phrase that, one of the concerns I have is that, when we look at the city as a whole, over 60% of the city rent their homes or their apartments. Over 60% of the city. In District 1, we have over 80% of the folks renting their homes and/or apartments. The question I'd like to provide and have answered, and Mr. Smith, I hope you take this as a friendly amendment, is that we can have a breakdown of how renters are going to absorb The question I'd like to provide and have answered, and Mr. Smith, I hope you take this as a friendly amendment, is that we can have a breakdown of how renters are going to absorb the additional cost of a higher water bill. They won't see it directly, but you're going to see it in your rent. And there's any way to get to that figure? Look at averages, look at trends. The cost and change in the water bill will give a reason why landlords will raise their rents. And in a city where over 60% rent their homes, I think it's a significant factor to look at, especially in my district where 80% rent. So I just want to focus on that a little bit, because it's something that gets lost in translation. And we are paying attention to the single residential homeowners. We know there's a strong base of homeowners in the city, but we can't forget the large population in our city that do rent. The other issue that I think we need to address is how the bills are interpreted. When you look at a water bill, it's a very complicated bill. I've sat here over the years and heard discussions and debates, and it begins to break down to, "Well, that figure is for the maintenance of the sewer line. That figure is for the sewage that's coming out. That is for the maintenance of the water line. That's for your light bill. That's for the maintenance of the power poles in front of your home." I mean, all these costs are broken down into one bill, and folks just want to know, "How much do I have to pay?" So how we educate the public, how we educate the neighborhood councils, and how to read these bills is significant. So we'll have a focused discussion as to what the dollar figure really means. And those are the kinds of issues I think we should be addressing if we're going to get out to a point where we're going to pay an independent person to come in and break down information and give us this analysis. It tends to get lost in the discussion, and we should have some way of informing folks on how to interpret their water bill, because it's not just a water bill. It's a sewage bill, sewage maintenance fee. I mean, there's a lot of things tagged on to this bill. But in the, in the, in the issue of renters, I think that's something we need to focus on, especially in many of our districts. The majority of the people that live in are constituents, are renters, and they are going to pay for this rate increase, but what is the right amount? We're opening up a Pandora's Box here, and we should understand what the impact of that cost should be on everyone. Thank you.
Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you. Well, it is a great day when everyone joins the course about neighborhood councils, and it is very gratifying to me to, to listen to all of us really talk about how things are different, how we do have a new system in, in Los Angeles. And I think what we're doing today is important. I, I believe, as many of you said, you know, the case just not, has not been made as to why we need to impose this 18% rate increase until some things happen. But, you know, back to originally where, you know, I believe the department went wrong. And it goes back to the city charter, which this city overwhelmingly voted for in 1999. And it starts with the preamble, which some of you probably don't even take the time to read. But it was actually, we did a, a contest for all the schools in Los Angeles to come up with the winning preamble. And actually, this was written by a young man who went to Belmont High School at the time. And it says, "We, the people of the City of Los Angeles, in order to establish a responsive, effective, and accountable government through which all voices in our diverse society can be heard, to provide fair representation and distribution of government resources and a safe, harmonious environment based on principles of liberty and equality, do hereby enact this charter." This was a young high school man who, who felt like this government needed to be responsive, needed to be effective, and needed to be accountable. And I think that's what we're doing today, and that is really, was the basis of the creation of neighborhood councils that sits firmly in the middle of the city charter. But the main issue with, with neighborhood councils is what has been said over and over again today. No longer do we only have lobbyists who are hanging out at the ropes. Not only do we have lobbyists who are strolling the halls of, of City Hall, coming into our offices, sometimes announced, sometimes unannounced. What this does, it gives average people in this city also a very strong voice. They also can whisper in our ear. Actually, they can yell very loud in our ear in terms of what they want us to do. But let's go back to where the main mistake was. This city charter says, "We will create a system to allow for input, to allow for input from neighborhood councils well in advance of decisions that are made, not just by city council, but by commissions." So when DWP approved this sometime last November, they, right off the bat, violated our city charter in terms of their relationship with neighborhood councils. We can't wait until after the fact, after the decision has been made, to then start doing outreach. And I got very upset in Commerce Committee when we realized that outreach had not been done, and they swore that, "Well, before it came to city council, the outreach would happen." But the decision by the commission had already taken place, and it was just a kind of an insult to our neighborhood councils to say, "Still, once again, we're sort of doing it backwards." And, and the outreach is clearly, I can't believe I'm already over, man, that was a quick three minutes. That's my birthday. Give me an extra 30 seconds. Because an outreach doesn't mean sending a video to a neighborhood council. Outreach does not mean inviting San Pedro neighborhood councils to come downtown for a meeting. Outreach does not mean notifying one person and hoping that that message will spread. Outreach does not mean, as was told to me, they can read about it in the paper. There have been articles in the paper, surely people know this rate issue is coming and how it's happening. That is not what it is about in our city anymore. We've got to change the way we do things, whether it's a street lighting assessment, or a rate increase, or anything we're doing, any decision that we make that will impact people in their homes, in their neighborhoods, that is when we have to make sure we have plenty of time. Now, we may not always agree with our neighborhood councils, and the day will come when they advise us very strongly and we decide to make another decision. But that really is not the issue. The issue is having their voice heard loud and clear, having the information in front of them, so they can actually advise us in a way that is knowledgeable and productive. So thank you, Greg, for taking leadership on this issue. I think this is important, as Councilwoman Grul said, to help restore the faith in government, which has been so badly betrayed in the past.
Thank you. Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if you can hold my time while I call the DWP representatives up to the table, I know they're here. Don't know exactly what time they walked in, but I hope they've been listening. This way. You don't have to take the long route. Colleagues, I've asked them to come forward, not because I have specific questions for them right here, right now. I may, as this discussion goes on, I've called them forward because I hope they're listening. I hope they're listening. The conversation we're having right now is not so much about the water rate increase. That specific item, that specific decision that we have has gone through the Commerce Committee, it's been waived out of the Budget and Finance Committee and Environmental Quality Committee. It's somewhere between committee and council, and now, more than ever, I'm confident that I made the right decision in not rushing to agendize that matter here at the full council. And in fact, I've asked, if not the Commerce Committee, the Budget Committee, or both, to hear this matter again. And so why are we taking our time? We're taking our time because how we handle the water rate increase is important, and we have to do it right. It's important for the people of Los Angeles. It's important for that neighborhood council network that has been brought into play yet again, but it's also important for the people around this horseshoe. Colleagues, today, some of you have spoken about the merits of the water rate increase. Do we need one? Do we not? And how some of your questions have not been answered. Some of you have mentioned the bond rating companies. Colleagues, let me tell you, I met with them. I met with them along with these gentlemen just two weeks ago. So I can tell you firsthand the role those meetings play, and whether or not we need to do something before those meetings or not, or what those bond rating companies might have asked for or wanted to see in terms of a timeframe for us to approve a water rate increase, if any, over the next couple of months. I was there, I can tell you. When it comes to homeland security, Mr. Viaragosa, Mr. Weiss, you're absolutely right. After September 11th, when Ms. Miesekowski and I were across the street at the Emergency Operations Center, yes, it was, the airport was first and foremost in our minds, shutting down air traffic. The port of Los Angeles was first and foremost in our minds as it pertained to vulnerable facilities. But I'll tell you what, one of the very first decisions we made was to allow the Department of Water and Power, under proper approvals, to fly over our critical infrastructure, not just within the City of Los Angeles, but in the basin. So I do believe there are very meritorious arguments to be made in terms of the water rate increase. What continues to frustrate me to this point, colleagues, is the less-than-perfect, less-than-aniable responsiveness and accountability by the department. We know that there's political pushes and pulls around here all the time. There's pushes and pulls in the council, there's pushes and pulls sometimes between the council and the mayor, or the council and a particular commission. But when this council has to cast votes and wants to do so in an educated manner, and the department refuses to come forward with full information and full disclosure, that is wrong. Mr. Cardenas, is that a fair characteristic of how committee proceedings went on the water rate matter?
Honestly, it truly is, and it's all on the record as well.
Colleagues, my hesitancy in moving forward with the water rate increase, which, again, is a separate matter than what we're hearing today. It's not so much whether I think we need one or not. I do believe we need one. Exactly how much of an increase remains to be the question. Where does this 11% come from? Where does the 7% come from, or the 18? Is this enough? Because I don't want to be back here in a year and a half from now. When we do our budget every year, colleagues, we not only look for a balanced fiscal year budget for the next fiscal year, we look at a five-year projection. I'll ask any of you, if you have been shown five-year projections by the Department of Water and Power? I haven't. I've asked for them. So they say we need an 11% this next year, a 7% the next year. What about the year after? They have not shared with me in any public forum whatsoever what may be needed beyond that. Why? Why? Why have you chosen not to share that information? Or have you been told not to share that information? We need to hear. Colleagues, when I met with the bond rating agencies, I told them my only hesitancy in not moving forward more quickly with this water rate increase is because I have been given assurances that this is enough. Good financial planning tells you you should have a long-term plan, not a year-to-year or two-year-to-two-year plan. So on the merits of the water rate increase, that has yet to be determined, and we want to see this information.
Mr. Padilla.
As it pertains to the process, colleagues, obviously, much was left to be desired. Ms. Hahn, I think, hit the nail on the head when she said, "Reaching out to one member of each neighborhood council is not enough," and clearly, that process broke down. We know you have a staff, you know, have contractors that are supposed to be helping with public outreach and communication. Colleagues, ultimately, this is a credibility issue for the Department of Water and Power, separate and apart from the merits of a water rate increase. Personally, it's been like pulling teeth trying to move on a renewable portfolio standard as an issue for the department. Personally, it's, it's been painful to see your lack of responsiveness. For me and my constituents in the north end of the San Fernando Valley, in Silmar, when there's any kind of wind and the power goes out, and you shove it off to say, "It's not our problem, it's an Edison problem," they're our customers. They are our customers. And when it comes to this water rate increase, and this motion brought by Mr. Smith, you leave us no choice.
Your time has expired, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, Madam President, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Cardenas, thank you for what you said. I do want to stand for Water Power. Water Power knows how to bring water, knows how to bring power, but you need to know how to do community better. And I have a little advantage, because I've worked here a long time, and I went when I heard that the commission passed it. And it's not a tax, Wendy, it's a fee. It's a fee for service. It's not a tax. It's a fee. But I went over to Water and Power personally and talked to people that I knew, who I worked with, and said, "Come talk to my community representatives." And they did come talk in November, they had it, the commission in December, they came here a series of times. And even sometimes, they even came and took input. As recently as last week, the representative from Silverlake told me he has a little bit of a better understanding because of the outreach. But I had to push, and also, I had the benefit of having to have a knowledge of the agency. Several, several years ago, over 100 years ago, when this agency was founded, the number-one-paid person in the City of Los Angeles was Azad Madre, a ditch digger for the Water Power, highest rate because the people valued water. And the people value water. Mr. Smith, you make very good points, and I'd like to see the rest of this council will join in you if you talk about trying to level the labor between City Hall and DWP. You know, let's just see, if everybody wants to go that way, I could understand that completely, and I think that's a good discussion. I think it's good to audit things, but I think it's also important to tell the people of Los Angeles where the water comes from, how it gets here, how it costs. And Wendy, in your district, a few years ago, on cold water, I believe, before you were councilperson, a big trunk line blew on a Saturday and flooded the whole area. And this city council had a special meeting, Cindy, and they talked about the infrastructure of the water system, the infrastructure of the aging water system. I just finished a trunk line down Sepulveda. I know you're doing a trunk line through the 10th District, and through the 5th District, and through my district to try to improve the water delivery system, which is so important. I, I have great respect for Water Power and the people who work there. I have great respect for people all the way up the line in a little creek as wide as this table that starts the flow. But I also tell you, members, we have to buy water more now, because we're diverting water that used to come to Los Angeles free, if that could be termed as free. We have to divert it to other established agreements we've made with Ennio County and Mono Basin, and also Owens Valley, and throughout the whole system, where we used to get 75% with city-owned water, if that was in the water rights. Now it's between 50 and below. So there's challenges that come. And water quality, whoever thought, and God bless the poor people of Madrid, whoever thought they'd have a challenge on, on railroad cars, on subways, on trains, into a train station? And who would ever think if someone did something? And I've been to Silmar and to that plan out there, Alex, and seen how complicated it is, but someone could walk in there and throw a monkey wrench into it and affect us tremendously. And that's very important, Mr. Smith. It's very important to protect that, Mr. Smith. And it's very important, Mr. Smith, to see that Water Power, within 72 hours after the 94 earthquake, returned power to the city, because we have a grit around this city, because someone thought about that long ago. Now, they're great at water, they're great at power, but they've got to be better at community. You've got to be better at community. And we do need to come back and audit everything. I support that. But come back and have an established plan so that we could show to the people of Los Angeles the value of our water and power system. Yesterday was a stage-one alert. Some parts of this, of the region were hurting for power. Water Power was able to distribute power back. It's a complicated system. And I will close with this: information is knowledge is power. And I believe in information to the community, to power to the community, for power for the community, and also the realization that the investment of the people of Los Angeles made in the past must be made again in the future so we can have good, reliable water, good-quality water, and good, reliable power. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Madam President. I couldn't agree with Councilmember Labonge more, in the sense that I don't think anybody has had an experience, at least in the six or seven months that this council's been around, where at some point in time, DWP hasn't come to the rescue or hasn't demonstrated why we have one of the strongest systems anywhere in the nation. And I think there are times when we're obviously standing to really salute you and praise you. And I know there's nothing like, in the middle of an evening, when a constituent calls at home that they've had a power outage or some type of major water line break, what it means to constituents to have responsiveness right away. And I know, colleagues, each and every one of us, if we haven't experienced that yet, we will experience that. It's inevitable with an aging infrastructure. And so what I don't want to do is join any effort to, to bash the agency or attack, and I don't think that's what anybody here today is trying to do. What this is really about is what Councilmember Labonge just mentioned. When we have neighborhood councils and block clubs and neighborhood associations, constituents from throughout the districts coming out and saying that they either weren't informed, they didn't understand it, they don't clearly understand what the rate increase is going to be for, what it'll be used for, why we need it, it's just an amazing disconnect between, and it's a classic disconnect, between government and the, the public. And that is what you're hearing today. If there's anything you should take back to your colleagues at DWP is, you know what? It may not be the issue, but it's the way we did it. And we could go on and on about oodles of examples of major infrastructure projects that government has tried to do, where communities are just outraged because they didn't know that a facility was going up in their backyard until somebody knocked on the door and said that, you know, that slet, that hammering you hear going on is a new power plant going up in your backyard, or a new large grocery store or something. We have stood behind the neighborhood council concept primarily because it's a way to ensure that the public gets information and they're empowered at the block level. What this is, and what you're hearing from almost everybody on the council, is a unanimous cry that this didn't happen in this case, and we've got to find a better mechanism with such a great agency. And I agree with Councilmember Labonge- And I agree with Councilmember Labonge. You guys have come to my rescue at a number of occasions, or I should say, our constituents' rescue. You've done a good job at keeping our rates more competitive than almost every agency in Southern California, if not the nation. And we could go on and on with what your employees do in such a great, great way. But somehow, on the public information side, somehow, on the public hearing side, we missed the opportunity on this one. And I think it would be a bad, bad decision on behalf of the public to do anything but support Councilmember Smith on this motion, to make sure that we somehow go back, start this over again, bring you out into the public, and really let the public understand. And in closing, time and time and time again, as Councilmember Cardenas said, if you give the public the information to ensure that they can make an educated and informed decision, they'll do the right thing. They really will. The constituents are smart people, they get it, and when we need to do something, they'll do it. But in this case, we didn't do that. So I, Mr. Smith, and Councilmember Gruehl and others proudly stand in support of the motion, and I appreciate what my colleagues have said in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Zine for the first time, who will be followed by Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Smith for a second time. Mr. Smith will be closing.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I wasn't here for the initial discussion. I was at the police academy on another affair, and I don't want to be redundant on anything. So if I get into that arena, please let me know. I want to commend you folks for what you do for the service of the people. I know you're very dedicated, and you're on the hot seat right now, and I know how that feels because I've been in that same boat. The perception versus reality. I come from the San Fernando Valley, where it's extremely hot, where people have swimming pools, where people use air conditioning probably a lot more than other parts of the city, and it affects a lot of people. The rates are critical. And the perception versus reality, when they see in the media how some of the money is spent. Now, I know that there's a transfer that goes back to the general fund, and that helps the general fund. We have to borrow from Water and Power to pay some of our bills to the general fund. When it comes to the organizations that you folks support, there's a lot of good organizations out there, including One Generation in my district, the Economic Alliance in the San Fernando Valley, and you folks support that. But the ratepayers are concerned about their cost for water and for power. And then when we have a discussion about a Rose Parade float, and people look at a perception saying, "If you can have money to pay for a Rose Parade float, and you want to increase our rates," it doesn't justify it. And then you look at the issue of the public relations, where some of the comments I've heard is that we're not getting the message out to the people, yet an article recently was published about how much money is being spent on public relations. We look at the green power program. We look at some of the other programs that the Department of Water and Power gets into, and the ratepayer says, "Are we paying 18% increase or being increased our rates to subsidize these programs, to subsidize the transfer back to the general fund, to subsidize a Rose Parade float, to subsidize some of those other activities?" That's the concern that my constituents tell me. If we lived on the west side and we had a nice, cool breeze, it'd be wonderful. But in my district, it's unanimous. They're not supporting it, they haven't been informed of the problems. As far as the infrastructure, I know it's collapsing, but that message has really not been broadcast to the consumers. And as far as security, we had an attack in this world, in this country, September 11th. I'm sure we've had some security from then until now. I don't know how we locked down all the water plants, how we secure that, but somehow, security's an issue, but how have we been managed to survive till this point without enhancing, without asking for additional dollars? So I think if we're candid with the consumers, candid with the people, to say, "We're not going to have these expenditures, we're going to focus our dollars on delivering service at a lower rate." And I know when the state had an energy crisis, we were safe and secure in Los Angeles, and I support that. But I look around, and I look at the constituents, the seniors, the people on fixed incomes, they can't afford an increase in their rates. So I support the motion, I seconded it or thirded or whatever, there was a number of signatures on that motion, to say we need to have it analyzed, we need to bring forth to the voters, to the constituents, exactly what it's about. Then we have to be conscious of what we're spending the money on, and that's the other side of the coin. You folks put a lot of money back in the general fund and the transfer every year. That helps the general fund, but should we have to borrow from one department to pay for the services for the city of Los Angeles, or should that department be self-sufficient and provide that service? As Tom Labonge just said, water comes from Northern California, it flows down here, and as we keep building more residents, more business, more swimming pools, we use more and more water. The need, the demand is there as the city continues to grow. But the rates are the concern for the consumers, and this collapsing infrastructure, which I know for a fact is happening, that message has not been broadcast to people in the city of Los Angeles. So if we're spending money on public relations, instead of green-power public relations, we should spend money telling the consumer exactly what the problems are and what we need this money for. Again, Frank, I know your dedication to the people, I know both, I know Jerry, I don't know the other gentleman, but I know what you're concerned about. You're focused on something that's important. We're focused on representing people that voice their concerns and issues to us. And I receive a lot of emails from neighborhood councils saying they're out of the loop. We need to include them in the loop. And I know you made some visits around some neighborhood councils. I'm just done, but education is important to make sure it's done properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Is that what you're going to say?
Mr. Cardenas for a second time.
Thank you very much. This financial justification motion, Mr. Salas, I don't know if you want to address it, or Jerry, this financial justification motion is what I'm calling it, the one that Greg Smith put forward, and what we're, is at the core of what we're discussing, or have been discussing for over a half hour. This financial justification motion, is this something that, once you look at it, et cetera, that you could actually incorporate in the way you present to the council and to the community of Los Angeles in the future when it comes to rate increase requests?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. One of the things that I'd like you to take back, please, if you would, to the commission, because actually, the commission is the one, the Department of Water and Power Commission, the appointed commission, is the one who actually votes on the rate increase first, before, should we usurp jurisdiction, decide that we're going to look at it next, correct?
That's correct.
So if you could take that message back to them as well, and remind them that this is going to be the new standard, very likely, if this motion, and I suspect and expect that this motion will in fact get favor through this council, and will incorporate it as part of the future responsibility of the department when they interact with the community of Los Angeles and with the council when it comes to what kind of rate increases are necessary for you to do the business that you do. One of the things that I definitely want to point out today, in case people are getting the wrong impression, the Department of Water and Power is actually an organization that does very, very good work. I don't want people to get the wrong impression. The Department of Water and Power does very, very good work. The Department of Water and Power is one of the biggest municipal water authorities in the country, and it's not easy to run that organization. So I want to make it very clear, to me, what we're talking about today isn't something that is judging the Department of Water and Power on how good a job they do. I think today, the discussion is about opening up the discussion in the future and being much more transparent about how you communicate your responsibilities to us, because we don't run the department. Even though I'm an engineer and Alex is an engineer, we don't know the intricacies of what you do on a daily basis, Jerry. That's your job. All we're saying is, please, communicate with us better. Make sure that you allow us the opportunity to understand all that you go through. It's been said that water is the most precious commodity of any society. Not electricity, not oil, not coal, it's water. You can't live without it. And we understand that, I understand that. All I'm saying is, we need to be much more transparent about communicating to the people of Los Angeles that when they turn on that tap, and they can put a glass under there, and they can drink it, and feed it to their children, that they're getting clean, reliable water anytime, any day. And that costs a lot of money. I understand that. The problem is, we need to understand what rate increase we need to deal with now and in the future, so that we can have responsible decision-making between us and the department. In addition to that, I'd like to give you some advice, please. Keep it simple, Jerry, Frank, keep it simple. It doesn't have to be that complicated. And I think if you keep it simple, and you answer the questions, and you put them before us, I think that Los Angeles, ratepayers and residents and this council will support the fact that a rate increase of some kind is necessary today and into the future. It has been 12 years, 12 years, since we've allowed you to increase your rates to bring us this reliable and clean water. I also want to take an opportunity to remind you that we have a lot of constituents out here that we're responsible for, and I just want to say, my number-one constituent, my wife, joined us here today. She gave me a little bit of advice about what to say or what have you, so I think I said it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I just wanted to amplify the good work DWP has done. We all know during the energon debacle, what happened to the state, DWP was the only agency that could stand tall and say, "We were able to protect our constituents, our ratepayers, and we didn't take the kinds of hits other places took." But that being said, I had made a request, and speaking to Councilmember Smith, I'd like to do is, see if I can get a second on a motion in which I'd like to ask, to do an economic analysis of what impact it'll have to renters, these rate increases. I don't want to blur or complicate the issue as to what the cost means, the justification for the 18%, but I'd like to have an impact, or an understanding of the impact on renters in this city, especially in very dense areas, what this rate increase means to those who are going to absorb that hit through their landlords. There's a way to analyze it, break it down, so that we have an understanding of what this trend means. We would be responding to over 60% of the constituency here in the state of Los Angeles. Can I get a second on that motion? It's a second motion.
Mr. Padilla.
As opposed to a second, Mr. Reyes, what I was going to suggest is, Mr. Parks, and seconded by Mr. Garcetti, they brought in a motion subsequent to Mr. Smith's motion that talks about the effect on renters in general, and specifically, those units under the rent stabilization ordinance. So I think there's already a vehicle where that's being looked at.
There is. So when we get this report back, we should keep those two bodies of information in front of us. So if I'm going to be making a decision, I need to know how it's impacting 80% of my district, which are renters.
And let me offer this as well, just for clarification. I mentioned the water rate increase is an item separate and apart from what's before us today. The motion that we're considering today that's going to go to a committee before coming back, that speaks to a process for future rate increases, and I have this question about the renters, the impact on renters. Colleagues, it's my intent to have these all come back together, so that when we discuss and ultimately vote on a water rate increase, we're taking into account all these pieces together, same agenda, same day.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla, for that clarification. Mr. Garcetti has...
Just a point of information on that, too. Just to answer the question, today, for rent-stabilized apartments, the effect would be zero. You cannot pass on the cost of that, and you can't go above the 3%. You can pass on increase, I believe, in electricity and gas, but you cannot do it with water. So today, at least, for rent-stabilized apartments, the effect would be zero. That's why we're looking at, okay, if landlords then had to absorb that, what is the implication?
And if you look, I'm sorry.
No, it's, so Mr. Garcetti's clarification is that that was part of the motion and the request that he and Mr. Parks brought in last week, so that, per Mr. Padilla, will all be brought in together as this comes back.
Great. And again, the communication issue is a very real one. How we break down the cost of the increase, and how we interpret these bills is very crucial, because a lot of folks don't know how to interpret that. I know there was a time when we were using Channel 35 to explain what each section means and what it pays for, and maybe it's something we need to bring back. Now that we're discussing pay rate increases, look at opportunities in which we could communicate these kinds of changes, and what it actually does. And again, I appreciate the information on the renters, but the folks who tend to rent are the folks who are probably struggling the most, carrying two, three jobs, dealing with a lot of pressures because of the lack of housing and all the other things that happen without, because they don't have the resources. To have this piled on top of them is going to be important. So if they indeed are not supposed to pay for the increase, at least they'll know how to defend themselves when the landlord tries to use it as an excuse.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Smith has pushed his button, wanted to close, but Mr. Labonge.
I just want to, yeah, before Mr. Smith closes, someone made the comment that we rubber-stamped this before. I don't think Ruth Galan ever rubber-stamped anything in her life. I don't think Joel Wax knows what a rubber stamp is. Zev and...
John Ferraro.
John Ferraro. And those were the leaders of this particular committee in the past, and they've always had to fight for the best interest of the people. And I wanted to just remind us of that, because those who I just spoke of do, have always looked closely, as we are now, on this particular issue. And I also want to make a comment. Mr. Rusty Millard, who's from Silverlake, I spoke to just a moment ago, and one thing the department wanted to get a message across, maybe Rusty, I could say a little faster for the interest of the council, is have that long-distance planning, have that forward planning, do what you should do, but engage with the community and do what's necessary to talk about the investment. And lastly, I'll close this, which is real important. I know we've been criticized, and the city's been criticized for taking people to show the Department of Water Powers facility. If we do want to empower neighborhood leadership, neighborhood councils, they must go to see the Levine Creek, they must go to see Power Plant Number One in San Francisco, up off the 5. They must see the facilities to have a great depth and understanding of what it's all about, so they could communicate to their leadership. It's very important, and I want to thank everybody. I think it's a very worthy discussion that we've had today. Thank you.
Mr. Smith to close.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I think it was very instructive today, a hope for Department of Water and Power, and I want to iterate something, first of all, that Mr. Labonge brought up. The Department of Water and Power is one of the best-run water and power agencies in America, and you have a great deal to be proud of. This is not an attack on Water and Power, but rather questioning about the numbers that you brought over and how we got to them, and more importantly, a new system of government in Los Angeles, which includes the people of Los Angeles in that system. I think Mr. Garcetti's analogy of that your system has to be as clear as the water delivers is the perfect thing to take back to Water and Power. I also want to congratulate Mr. Padilla as president, who kept this off the agenda for a long time, even though he's pressured to, because he had a gut feeling that it just wasn't right. And I think, as we've heard today, and I think you've heard today, it just wasn't right. We weren't going in the right direction, we weren't satisfied with what we saw. And I think that's important for you to understand, that we want a new system that includes the people in the decision-making, but also brings us numbers that we can really digest and understand. I know Mr. Gaywy does a wonderful job of numbers over Water and Power, but it's the way it's presented in this format, I don't think, was understandable for many of us, and certainly for the public at large. And so I think this is a great opportunity for Department of Water and Power. First of all, it gives you the ability to go out, and this is not an audit, ladies and gentlemen, it's not an audit we're asking for, because an audit takes place after you spent the money. This is for a financial analysis before you spend the money, as to need. And this gives you the ability, then, when you come forward to us and say, "We have a need," that you can say, "We've got a stamp of approval here from a bonded agency that we recognize, that says, yes, this is in fact the need, and here's why." It opens that seamless form of government that Mr. Garcetti talked about. And I think that's what is needed here, a process that we all feel comfortable with, that the numbers that we are brought forward are comfortable, and that we can say with a straight face to the ratepayers and the citizens of this city, that this is a qualified increase, it is needed, and we know why it is needed, and we haven't felt that. And I think that's what the important message you take back to your board is, we have not been satisfied that the process was right, and two, that the numbers really were substantiated as to need and time. And so this is a process, I think, will give you that. I thank Mr. Cardenas for taking it to his committee. I support his motion to take it over there and bring all this back together in one big package that we can understand, and then go forward from there for all future years, and answer the questions that every citizen of this city has as to why we're doing this. So thank you very much, member of the council. I appreciate your kind words today. I appreciate your support, and I think this is good for government in Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And colleagues, unless there's anything further, this matter has been moved and seconded to be referred to the Commerce Committee without objection. We'll do so, and look forward to this item coming back. Next item, please.
Item number 62 was called special by Councilmember Cardenas.
Mr. Cardenas. Ms. Miskowski.
The rate increase itself had been scheduled and is scheduled on Budget and Finance Committee today, but for those citizens who are down here or those who might come, I'm going to be chairing Budget and Finance Committee, and given our constant discussion today, I'm going to ask that that matter be continued on Budget and Finance Committee, so we do not consider having another committee meeting on the rate increase until Commerce Committee has had a chance to evaluate this, what we just adopted today.
Okay. That's clear to everybody. Now moving on to item 62, called special by Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Council President. This item, 62, is very important. It's very important to the children of Los Angeles, and it's very important to the children with disabilities in Los Angeles. Universal Access Playgrounds allows children to meet each other, to play together, to laugh together, in a way that no other facility allows them to do. Universal Access Playgrounds is something that is enjoyed over at Griffith Park. There's a playground called Shane's Inspiration, and if you've ever been there, if you're ever in a bad mood, if you're ever having a bad day, if you ever need something to uplift your spirits, just go, sit in the park, and watch the children play. Universal Access Playgrounds are expensive. They could cost anywhere between several hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars to do them properly. And the one thing that I want to stress today is that the Department of Recreation and Parks, please, go get our money. I was very fortunate, when I was in the state legislature, when the people of California passed a statewide park bond, I was able to put into that bond an earmarked amount of money for the city of Los Angeles, all told about 12 and a half million dollars exclusively for the city of Los Angeles, not to be competed with other cities or counties across the state. And then what I was able to do was to earmark nine and a half million of that money for the city of Los Angeles for these playgrounds, for our children. The kind of playground that allows any child of any capacity to play on that playground. Unfortunately, we only have two in the city of Los Angeles today. A third over at Handsome Dam might be built soon. This nine and a half million dollars is just short of my dream of making sure that every single council district has one of these playgrounds built. It should be enough money for us to have 15 playgrounds. But first and foremost, what the department needs to do is send the letter, and send it to the state of California, so we can go get our money. And one thing that I want to warn us here in Los Angeles, please expedite this, because no money is safe in Sacramento. And I don't mean it facetiously, I mean it seriously. With the way the state has bonded, it could be that some of our other bonding capacity will be affected, and that's where this money's coming from. A state park bond that was passed by the voters of California just a few years ago. So I just wanted to stress that this is a great opportunity for Los Angeles, it's a responsibility that I hope the department expeditiously takes advantage of. This money has been sitting there for close to two years now. We need this money to come to Los Angeles, and we need to come to Los Angeles right away, so that the children can laugh, so that the children can play, and so they can break down barriers between each other, and learn to care and play with each other, no matter what their conditions are. So I want to thank the department for moving this forward, and I hope that when this passes, we can move it expeditiously forthwith. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just rise to thank my colleague, Councilman Cardenas, it was hard work. I know Lincoln Park, we have boundless playgrounds being designed, about to start construction. It's an incredible asset for those young people who don't have the ability to interplay like other children, so just sitting there at the sidelines watching fun, they can actually be participating. So that is a great relief, especially in the areas, the neighborhoods, where there is no open space designed for them, the poorest of the park areas in the city, and to have this accessibility, just something beyond just playing in the hallways or in your fire escape landings, there's actually a place for them to go and enjoy some skies, some nice lawn area, grass area, and enjoy some good time fun. So thank you, Councilman Cardenas, and let's move this thing. Thank you very much.
Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Cardenas. As you requested, I waived this out of committee, because we've got to go, 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 we've got to work as hard as you did to get this money for Los Angeles as a state representative. And I really think it's so important that we push even harder now, because it's disappointing, sometimes things get stuck on a shelf somewhere, stuck on a desk, with the hard hiring freeze, someone all of a sudden isn't there to push it along. And I'm proud to say that Shane's Inspiration is in my district. I'm proud to say I met Catherine Curry-Williams and Tiffany Harris on a rock on a day like we had yesterday, a hot day about six years ago, when they told me their story and why they wanted to build a universally accessible playground. And you've taken a great lead, you gave an absolutely wonderful speech, where we had a beautiful program for Shane's Inspiration. And members, this is something you should all get involved with as well throughout your districts. These are the most popular playgrounds and the best playgrounds. I think there's Aiden's Place in Westwood in the 5th District, and Mr. Weiss's district, and more need to be built throughout. And Mr. Cardenas, as a state representative, provided that. Thanks to a Vox help, we pushed it out of committee, and we go on forward. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I too wanted to thank Mr. Cardenas for his vision in bringing these playgrounds. I know that a park that was started under Jackie Goldberg, that we've been pushing ahead with, on April 22nd will be opening at Lake Street between Temple and Beverly, and it has a boundless playground as a part of that as well. So again, thank you for that work and bringing that vision to our city parks, and we invite the community to come out to Lake Street and the Temple-Beverly Historic Filipino Town area at noon for that opening, and a groundbreaking of a school right next door. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Mr. President, item number 43 was adopted previously. However, there is an amending motion that has been distributed. Do you wish to reconsider that matter?
Sure, Ms. Miskowski moves reconsideration. Let's open the roll. On reconsideration of item 43, let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Item 43 now back before us, and amending motion, colleagues, has been distributed. Unless there's any objection, we'll take the matter as amended. Without objection, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Before proceeding to the next item, let me recognize Councilmember Cardenas. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's do housekeeping.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Friday, April 2nd, to leave at 11:30 for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Smith moves. Excuse is granted.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Mr. President, to be up forthwith on item 61 is a grant for LAPD.
Forthwith on item 61. And anything further before going into closed session? If not, let me just announce for the public that Mr. Parks has recused on items 54 and 55, two of the closed-session matters on today's agenda. Mr. Parks is not in attendance at today's council meeting, so he clearly will not be part of the closed-session deliberation or consideration of those items. And before we go into closed session, Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, I'd like to announce the presence of Jorge Alberto Sanchez, Consejal, Alcaldia, Astal Tepec de El Salvador Comisionado. He's present with us today.
Bienvenido. Bienvenido. Interested in knowing how the presidential elections ran. Very smoothly, I'm sure. But colleagues, with that, in conformance of California law, the council will now adjourn to closed session. Sergeants, please clear the chambers. Madam Clerk, do we need to confirm the items that we took up in closed session?
Yes, Mr. President. First item before council is item number 54, and that's settlement in the case of Sergio Salcedo versus City of Los Angeles, and that's an amount of $440,000.
Okay, let us open the roll on that. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That is approved.
And next item, item number 55, is settlement in the case of Leonard Robinson versus Officer Jeffrey Nolte et al., and that's an amount of $2 million.
Okay, let us please open the roll for that. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That is approved as well.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay, any housekeeping?
No, that was taken care of before closed session.
Okay, colleagues, announcements? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind the members of the council that tomorrow night in Northridge, we'll have an off-site council meeting, and for anyone in the public that would like to attend, it's at 6:30 at the Greek Orthodox Church on the corner of, excuse me, I always do, on the corner of Plummer and Balboa, and the public is invited to attend, and I think they'll find it very informative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Other announcements, colleagues?
One announcement, in Atwater Village tonight, we will have a town hall meeting sponsored by the Atwater Village Residents Association. That is at 7 o'clock at Atwater Elementary School, so residents of Atwater Village, please feel free to come on out. If no other announcements, colleagues, please rise for adjourning motions.
I recognize Mr. Labonge. Please rise in the audience as well. Thank you.
In the history of rock and roll, a famous duo, the Jan and Dean, Jan Barry, who was 62 years old, famous for the 1960 surf music, including Little Old Lady from Pasadena, Dead Man's Curve, which is out by UCLA, and many, many other songs. He suffered a traffic accident in 1966 and was paralyzed, but worked very hard, did Jan Barry, to recover from that, and did perform later on with Dean Torrance. He went to University High School in Los Angeles, and collaborated a lot with Brian Wilson and the Beach Boys, as surf music was the rage of Southern California nation in the early 60s. Ask we adjourn in memory of Jan Barry, who survived by his wife, Gertie Berry.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labonge, Mr. Ludlow.
Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of a young kid, 16-year-old kid by the name of Fidel. Fidel was shot in the head Friday night at the corner of Redondo and Venice. He and his friend Jamal had just come from a party, and a couple of members associated with a gang got into an argument at that party, and went after a third friend of theirs, and missed him, and he got on the cell phone, called Fidel and Jamal, and said, "Hey, watch out, these guys are out looking for us." And almost by the time that phone call was finished, according to the LAPD, those individuals found Jamal and Fidel, and almost before he got off the phone, shots rang out about 11:30 Friday night, and both Fidel and Jamal were struck. Fidel was struck in the head and killed, Jamal was struck in the head and went into surgery, was in surgery all night at Cedars. And not only do we want to acknowledge the passing of Fidel, but we want to thank God for sparing the life of Jamal, who is now paralyzed with a gunshot wound in his head. LAPD has asked that we not release their last names for a whole host of reasons, but I'm sure by some standards, people would say that Fidel and Jamal may have been in the wrong place at the wrong time, may have in fact been involved with some of the wrong people. But nevertheless, it continues to be a tragedy of the young people in this city that are caught up in very violent society. And young Fidel, who went to LA High School, lost his life, and young Jamal is hanging on to life, and hopefully will survive nevertheless, it appears to be, as a paraplegic. And 15 and 16-year-old children. So, members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Fidel, and pray for Jamal.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Are there adjourning motions, colleagues? Mr. Zine?
I have two, Mr. President. Request for adjourning in memory of Mary Rita Alexi, passed away March 18th, also known as Rita. Rita's life was a celebration of both many traditional values, as well as unconventional traits and quirks. Born and raised in Benton, England, she migrated to the United States in the early 50s, where she practiced her lifelong profession of nurse and midwife. She met and married her husband, Paul, in 1957, settling in Los Angeles, raising four children, and making one big happy family. Mary Rita's life never wanted for activity, her volunteerism, having contributed countless hours to her local parish of St. Bernardine Catholic Church in Woodland Hills, the brothers of charity, as well as the needs of her many patients. The garden she so lovely tended bears witness to her love of all living things, as did the innumerable parties and celebrations that were held there. Although this world is somehow empty, from the lack of her spirit, she remains with us through her work and legacy, not the least of which is her four children and three grandchildren. To say she will be missed somehow rings empty in the light of our loss. She survived by her daughters, Mary Monica, Mary Katrina, Mary Kelly, her son John, grandchildren Jason, Lisa, and William. May Mary Rita Alexi rest in peace. Also adjourning in memory of Richard McCauley Jr., passed away March 27th. Richard McCauley Jr., Los Angeles Police Detective III, son of Richard McCauley Sr. of 77th Street Division, passed away after surgery. He was 37 years of age. He survived by his father, Richard McCauley Sr., mother Karen Tots, stepmother Sedonia McCauley, children Erica, Jordan, Richard, Ben, Brandon, grandmother Juanita, Sonora, aunt Sue and Joanne, and his fiancee Francis. May Detective Richard McCauley Jr. rest in peace.
Ms. Barry.
Second adjourning motion that Mr. Zine did.
Okay, let Ms. Barry to that as well. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? I know we mourn the passing of Alestra Cook as well, well-known TV personality and host of Masterpiece Theater for many years, and I hope that we all celebrate today, again, Janice Hahn's birthday. We had to do that in closed session, but I know that the city valet wishes her well today. Please call the roll. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.